I guess I should have waited for Commissioner Newman to get back. Oh, there he is. I was just reminding everyone that we didn't have any proximity.
Yeah, I heard that.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, it might be worth noting, Commissioner Newman, that that was an accident. I think you recused yourself from 115 Saxon last time by thinking there was a proximity issue, and there was not. So just so that the applicant and whomever else attended the previous hearing understands why you're not recusing, I would suggest.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the last part.
Oh, I would just suggest that you explain that you recused yourself last time, but it was in.
Explain that, yeah. Yeah, they did ask why.
Yeah, they had reached out, so.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Are we live?
Do we have Brian on, Sean?
Yes.
There's Brian. Okay.
Hi. So.
So once, I guess we're live.
Okay, we're live. We'll call the January 20th, 2022 meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. May we have the roll call, please? Louis?
Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Newman.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Now, if everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the sovereign public, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just as a reminder tonight, Kingston Rivera is our technician for the television broadcast. And it appears we're going to have several people weighing in on the meeting tonight for various items on the agenda. And while you can't be physically here, it is open to the public. And there are several methods that you can join in the meeting. And if we could have that screen on line there now, there we go. So you can email comments, you can participate by dialing in. Do we have another screen to portray? There we go. So you can call in using that 669 number, join the webinar, raise your hand when you're ready to speak. And because we are likely to have numerous people participating in the meeting tonight with comments on various agenda items, we're going to limit comments to three minutes. So if you intend to comment, please gather your thoughts, be succinct, and state what you want to state in the three minutes. Okay, with that, we'll go to oral communications. And the first item under, oh, I'm sorry, that's not it. We're getting rid of me. At this time, we're, each chair serves for one year. My time is up. And we're going to be nominating a new chairperson and new vice chair tonight. And so I will open it up for nominations.
Hey, I have a nomination.
Commissioner Newman?
I will nominate Commissioner Wilk for chair.
I'll second that. Commissioner Westman?
Okay, we'll take these one at a time. Are there any other nominations for the chairperson? Okay, may I have the roll call, please, Louis?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Wilk. Since you are now the chair, you can entertain nominations for the vice chair.
Well, I will do exactly that. Thank you, Commissioner Ruth. Let's open this now to nominations for vice chair. We'll hear a nomination.
I will nominate Commissioner Westman for vice chair.
I hear a nomination from Commissioner Newman for Commissioner Westman, and a second from Commissioner Ruth. Do I have a roll call, please, Louis?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. We have a new chair and vice chair. Let's move on then to item number three, which is oral communication. Katie, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There's, we did receive additional public comment late this afternoon, I want to say at around 4:00 p.m. regarding 115 Saxon, which is on the agenda as item 5B. But other than that, nothing has changed in terms of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Could I ask the commissioners if they had a chance to review that additional input? Is there anybody who hasn't had a chance to look at that letter?
No.
Okay, so we've all had a chance to review that. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead then. And does any of the commissioners have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Well, I have a comment, Chairman Wilk.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I've been sending informational broadcasts about efforts to repeal SB 9. And yesterday, I was chastised by the city attorney saying, "I can't do that, that it could lead to a violation of the Brown Act." I seriously dispute the fact that I can't send information to all the planning commissioners that doesn't result in any action or affects any action. So I told the city attorney that I believe it's no different than a private citizen sending information, the same information to the planning commission. I told her I would abide by her recommendation, although I disagree with it. So I think a private citizen will probably be sending you that same information.
Did you want to add that to the agenda?
Well, at some point, I would like the planning commission to take an action supporting the effort to repeal that state law, but not today.
Okay, then let's move on then to public comment. Do you have any other comments other than that? And did you want to talk to Katie about actually putting that on the agenda for next time?
Not at this time.
Okay, are there any other comments from commissioners?
Commissioners or public?
Well, since we started with the commissioners, well, all right, we'll go back to the public comments then. Public comments, short communications from the public concerning matters that are not on the agenda. So are there any members of the public who would like to speak on topics that are not on the agenda? Now is your time. Katie, is anyone raising their hand?
Let's see, of the attendees on Zoom, there are no hands raised. And I'm going to check the email system next. And no emails either.
Okay, very good. We'll move on then back to commission comments, which is the item 3C. Are there any other commissioners which would like to speak out at this time?
Yes, I have a comment, Commissioner.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Newman.
I would just like to acknowledge Commissioner Ruth's service as chairman in the past year. Although it was all virtual, he did his usual excellent job in running the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. The good thing was I didn't have long pants on.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Westman concurs, as does Chairman Wilk. Any other comments? There are no other comments. We'd like to move on to the staff comments. Does staff have anything they'd like to?
I do. I have a few items for you tonight. First, it's my pleasure to introduce two new Capitola employees. I personally think Capitola is a very special place to work in our small community. And it makes it even better when you get to hire great new people and have them join your team. So first, I'd like to introduce our deputy city clerk, Louise Osumwigi. Louise comes from the city of San Jose as the deputy clerk, legislative secretary. He's worked in election offices at the county of Santa Clara. Before coming to the United States, he served as the Canadian Armed Forces, in the Canadian Armed Forces. He graduated from the Royal Military College of Canada with a Masters of Art degree in international relations and strategic studies. He is fluent in Spanish. He's very happy to move to the Santa Cruz area with his wife. And it's been a pleasure getting to know Louise. And Louise, it's yours.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Katie. Nice to meet you, commissioners. It's great to be here at City of Capitola, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
And so Louise will be joining us and taking minutes at all of our meetings from here on out, and it'll be a pleasure. And next, I'd like to introduce you to our new senior planner, Brian Frelick. Brian has over a decade of experience in progressively responsible planning department positions in the Bay Area, and most recently worked for eight years in the private sector as a development project manager. So he's worked on both sides of the counter. We're happy to add this rounded knowledge base and experience to our staff. It is allowed for fast onboarding, immediate contribution to project processing, and a balanced perspective. Brian has always lived in the South Bay and Central Coast regions, growing up in San Jose and Hollister. He now lives in the Santa Cruz Mountains. He went to school in Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, and has a degree in city and regional planning. So it's just been a pleasure getting to know Brian, and I'm looking forward to you all getting to know him better as well. A true asset to the team. Brian, would you like to say?
Yeah, well, thanks, Katie. Thanks for that nice introduction. It's a pleasure to meet the planning commission. I've been with the city here for a little over a month and a half, and it's kind of, the onboarding's gone really well, but it's come pretty fast. But Sean and Katie are such a strong team. I'm really, really blessed to be here. Worked in a couple of very proud communities in Belmont and Los Altos Hills. But I have to say that being here in Capitola, one thing I've really recognized is just kind of the happy feeling that I get when I interact with residents. And if they, that comes through when they're taking a visit to the planning department, you know, I think that's really saying something. So thanks again for the intro, and I look forward to serving the community going forward.
Thank you, Brian. Welcome, yes. Katie, anything else?
Yes, I have one more update for you. I wanted to let you know that AMBAG, it's that time of, it's, we're back into the identifying RENA numbers for affordable housing development. We're going to be updating our housing element portion of our general plan. It's due in December of 2023. And so I've been attending planning director meetings with AMBAG, and the board has been meeting to decide on their RENA methodology. In the fifth cycle, which we're now in, we were assigned 146 units for Zone 4 for affordable housing within the city. The, in 2018, a lot of the legislation for housing changed and had a really big impact on how this six-cycle distribution is going to work out. And it was last week, the board met and they passed a new methodology. And under this methodology, Capitola would be assigned 1,300 new units. So it's, we were expecting, I kept hearing three to four times the amount of the first round. So I was prepared for 600, I think I'd been saying at a few meetings. Not, we're at about nine times our previous numbers. So next week, I'm going to city council. I'm going to launch the, get our RFP out there for our housing element. I'm thinking this is going to be the year of housing. And hopefully, we get great participation from our community members. It's going to be, we're going to need to involve all parts of our community and get some really good feedback on where we're going to plan for our 1,300 new units. But so we've got our work cut up for us, but I just wanted to give you that update, and I'll be bringing you updates regularly on that as we launch this process. But Planning Commission will be very involved throughout. So, thank you.
It's hard to take that seriously when that's an impossible task. Yeah, I can only take out about 900 roommates myself.
So does the city have about 4,200 housing units now?
That's correct. Yep.
So.
It's more than a quarter.
That's more than a 25% increase in the housing units we have now.
It is. There's a lot to the formula of how they came up with this distribution. It's surprising to me they've gone further away from looking at your developable land standards, like how much area you actually have to develop. They're looking to put more density within existing cities. And also, one of the larger factors is equity. And because Capitola has such great resources, we're a resource-rich community, a lot of the places that don't have such great resources, I think it was something about like 42% of the overall, there's 30,000 units that have to be distributed within our region. And the way the equation breaks down, it's somewhere around like 40, 42% of the, you know, of regions that have really good facilities, great schools, job opportunities are going to get the higher numbers in this round. So I will bring to you the final formula. It's not done yet. At this point, what the, what AMBAG board approved now goes back to the HCD, and they'll provide them with comments, and that will come back to the board for a final decision. And then at that point, so I've been tracking it closely. And council member Peterson is our person on the board. So she's been doing a great job of representing Capitola and our concerns. But as this progresses, I can bring you more information on it. But it is, it's more than a 25% increase in existing units.
So when you say that we are going to be involved, you would come to us with some zoning recommendations in order to accommodate these 1,300 units? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, we, part of the RENA numbers is once we're allocated numbers, we need to make sure that we can, that we have sites in which to accommodate these numbers. So we have to go through our zoning and make sure that we have enough sites zoned to be able to fulfill our RENA numbers. And there's really strict guidance there of having to meet these deadlines within specific, by specific timelines, and rezoning your areas within specific timelines to stay compliant with the state.
What's the penalty if you don't meet their threshold of 1,300 units?
We could lose funding. It's tied to a lot of the grants that come through.
Doesn't it depend on willing developers?
So.
But it sounds to me like we just need to allocate the locations.
We have to plan for it and zone for it. We don't necessarily have to, we're not always going to find the developers. But there has to be enough opportunity under zoning to not get in the way of these developments happening. So there will be more. Sorry for the bad news. It's a big number. But it's not the final number. So we'll see.
Okay.
And those are my comments.
Okay, so no more comments from staff. We're ready to move on to item four, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are taken, approved by the council with one vote. Does anybody wish to take any of these items, item either A or B, off the consent calendar and bring them into public hearing?
I'd like to pull item B.
Okay, Katie, can we pull item B, 1515 Prospect Avenue, and bring it into public hearings? What do you think? Should we put that at the end or at the beginning? Let's put that at the beginning since it's probably the first thing in the package. So is everybody okay with just pulling that? Does anybody want to pull 4A? If not, I'm ready to hear a motion for consent calendar, item 4A only.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with 4A only.
Wait, we have a second.
That's to continue 4A. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Westman and a second from Commissioner Ruth. Louis, can we have a roll call vote on the consent calendar? And Chris?
Aye.
Here. Aye, aye, sorry.
We know you're here.
Yes. I hope I am.
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Christensen is not here, so we don't need to point that out continually. Okay, so let's move on then to public hearings, item five. We'll move 1515 Prospect Avenue to the top of that list. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, and Chair Wilk. The applicant is proposing to amend the previous permit approval to include exterior modifications and a new second-story rear store, excuse me, rear deck to the residence located at 1515 Prospect Avenue. The previous approval included first- and second-story additions to the existing 1,518 square-foot single-family residence. The current application complies with all development standards of the R1 zone. And the application, the original application also included details of a new detached 540-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, which was located in the rear, and it was approved under a ministerial permit. The existing residence at 1515 Prospect Avenue is a non-conforming two-story, single-family residence. The lot is located in the Jewel Box neighborhood, and it's surrounded by one- and two-story single-family homes. This is the proposed site plan. The amendment would not actually modify the approved building footprints, landscape, or parking. It also wouldn't modify the ADU or the landscape plan or the original encroachment permit. So it's really just focused on some of the exterior to the primary dwelling unit. The proposed second-floor plan, second-story floor plan, excuse me. The new rear deck is shaded in blue towards the north side. A condition has been added requiring the applicant to reduce the rear deck width by two feet in order to comply with the minimum width of the side yard setback of six feet. Are the previously approved elevations. And these are the proposed today. The previous approval included a design that had horizontal hardyboard siding, hardyboard fish scale tile at the gable ends, and a new brava slate tile roof. The proposed elevations and modifications maintain much of the original or the previously approved exterior materials with modifications, including changes to first- and second-story ceiling heights, moving the front deck columns forward, adding horizontal siding to the front second-story deck, and a new rear second-story deck, as well as minor alterations to the windows and doors along the front elevation. The areas shaded in blue represent the new rear second-story deck. The applicant is proposing a frosted glass privacy barrier along the north side property line, which is shaded in green. The city received comments from property owners at 1505 Prospect Avenue and of 5055 Garnett Street citing privacy concerns regarding the proposed rear deck. The properties are located to the south and southwest, respectively. We've overlaid the site plan and blown up some of the locations of the footprints. The green area that you can see there is the deck in question. And the red, the red addresses are the addresses with privacy concerns. Design criteria F requires that the city consider and minimize privacy impacts of adjacent properties with building features such as entrances, doors, and decks. Considering adjacent residences, staff estimated that the nearest of the two residences is approximately 26 feet from the proposed deck. That would be 1505 Prospect. With that, staff recommends approval, and we can answer any questions that you might have about the elements of the application or the deck itself.
Thank you, Sean. Do any commissioners have questions to staff?
Yes, I have one question.
Mr. Newman?
When I went out there, I did not see the noticing, although it seems like all the neighbors were aware of the application. Was it, was a notice placed on the property?
Yes.
Did anyone know what happened to it?
I walked by there on Monday, and it was there on Monday.
Oh, okay. Oh, it must have just come down recently. So, but anyway, I'm just asking that because I do believe everyone who is affected by it was aware of the application.
Are there any other questions of staff? I have a question. The, it seems to me that there have been a lot of second-story decks that are coming before us. And this is as a result of the change in our code, which now no longer includes deck, decking as part of the floor area ratio. So I was curious, maybe staff could clarify, can you recall why that, why we changed that? What was the rationale for changing that in the code? I know I was part of that, but I just can't remember.
Sean, would you like me to answer that?
Here.
Sure.
Yeah, Katie, if you can remember, and then we can ask the other members of the commission. But what was your take on that?
So my recollection of that is that when we looked at updating our floor area ratio and what would contribute towards floor area ratio, we were really looking at massing and considering massing and what should be added towards the overall massing on the site. So the idea there was that these second-story decks, because they don't have a rooftop over them, that they would not consider be, and they're not enclosed, it doesn't contribute towards the massing. And however, we would require a design permit so that the planning commission could review them and make sure that the concerns associated with the design and privacy and, you know, all of the criteria within a design permit, they would still be required to be reviewed by Planning Commission, but they would not be limited in size and tied to the floor area. That's my recollection. but they would not be limited in size and tied to the floor area. That's my recollection.
Is that the commission's recollection as well?
Yes, that's basically my recollection and, uh, since the topic's come up now, I was actually gonna ask Katie to, um, put on one of our future agendas, talking about the whole issue with second floor decks. And I can bring that up at the end of the meeting, but I think it's, it's something that we need to talk about.
That seemed to be very controversial. Um, yeah, let's bring that up again in, in comments, because I'd be, I'd be curious to know, maybe you can formulate exactly what you'd want to discuss specifically, whether or not we want to change the code or what have you. Um, okay, uh, so my, my understanding of the, uh, the privacy issue is, is we have this two-foot setback on second stories. It, is it, Katie, is it your, uh, impression that was intended to address the privacy issue?
Um, or, or, I'm sorry, is, is that, is this question directed at fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue? Because it might be helpful, Sean, if you could pull up the slide.
No, no, it's, it's, it's a general question. Because, I mean, the general question of second story decks and privacy issues comes up on every application. And so in my mind, the thought is, well, you have the two-foot setback on the second story. And to me, that's, oh, that perhaps was intended to, to address the privacy issue. But maybe there was, it was a, maybe just a design issue or something.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not sure the hist- uh, history of the two, additional two-foot setback on the second story.
Sure. Um, so within our zoning code, the first story has to be setback ten percent of the lot width, and the second story fifteen percent. So it's, it, they call this type of zoning like the wedding cake effect of the second layer being stepped in. The purpose of that is for articulation in a building. So by having the second story have to be articulated and within the massing, if somebody wanted a flat plane on their, on the front of the home, they would, or on the side of the home, they would just have to step it in at the second floor level. But it, it really, the purpose of that is articulation. I don't think the intent of the additional, um, fifteen percent setback on the second story was ever intended as a solution to privacy. Typically, the planning commission will look at windows where they're set within a second story and decks uh, to en- to ensure that they're, uh, sighted correctly to ensure privacy in our dense neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, um, let's move on to, uh, comments, public comments. Does, does the applicant wish to make a statement? And again, what we'll do is we'll limit our comments to three minutes. Um, keep your comments short. If there are, uh, a lot of people here, we want to, want to be, close this meeting in time and give everybody a chance to, uh, to comment. So, um, Katie, is there, uh, other comments? And we'd like to give the applicant the first shot at it, if they have a comment.
I, I have opened the mic for, uh, Peter Shemshoeian. He can speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Um, uh, if I can, I really would like to go last, just to hear what other comments might be. I, as the owner of the property, I kind of like the chance to, uh, to answer any further questions and concerns. I think I've been trying to do that through the whole process, so if you don't mind, I'd love to go last, please.
I have no problem with that. Katie, I don't suppose that's a problem with Robert's Lord or anything.
No, that's fine.
Let's, let's, okay, let's open it up to general public comments then. Are there any other, uh, members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
So I'm, I'm looking at the attendees in the Zoom meeting and I'm not seeing any hands raised. Um, oh, I do see a hand raised. Uh, let's see. Uh, the name is, Managing Stress.
Oh.
Codename.
Sorry, it's Denise Rovai and Anthony Rovai here. Anthony is gonna speak on our behalf.
Rovai, go ahead.
Oh, hi. So I've been, uh, involved in this process since the beginning and back in, uh, April second of twenty twenty, I believe it was, when it first came to, uh, the council, I said I totally approved his, his, his plan, except for I just wanted to make sure that his big, flat roof in the back would not become a rear deck. Um, and then the next thing I did is a postcard a few days ago. I saw no other noticing. I have not seen any other plan changes. Um, and then now it's like, okay, here, this thing is here. And now we're talking a rear deck. Um, you know, I mean, if his main idea was to be able to have a place to sun himself in the backyard, he had a full, wide-open backyard that he could go and sun himself in, but he decided not to do that. Decided to build the ADU. Um, so he has no space in the backyard to, to sun himself and wants to put it now, um, on the second story and which looks into our living space and our, uh, child's bedroom, along with the neighbor's bedroom and bathroom. Uh, it's just, to me, it seems like, you know, the wants of the one is not meeting the, the needs and benefits of, of his neighbors. Um, I also read the letter that, um, the neighbors on the other side written for him and it, it looks like there's a lot of, uh, verbal guarantees that are not enforceable. No smoking cigars on the deck. That's not an enforceable, that's a verbal contract. Uh, so I'm like, you know, they wrote a letter to try and be a good neighbor. And I'm sorry, I think that this process, as you guys are noticing, with these second story rear decks, is an issue. You know, and the other thing is, is like, you know, who's gonna move in there later? We don't know who's gonna move in there. What are their, what are their intentions for the decks? I'm just saying, you know, second story backyard decks are just a bad idea. Um, having them even be available, um, puts neighborhood stress, you know? I understand Pete wants it. Um, clearly, he knew that I was opposed to it. You know, and he has a ginormous front deck that is quote, "non-conforming", which is fine. Hey, great, keep it there. Um, but he's also asking at that time to increase the size of his non-conforming deck. So it, to me, it's like he gets an approved plan and then he pushes the limits. Oh, yeah, and oh, by the way, now I'm gonna flip the, flip the height of my, my floor. I don't care, you know? So now he's higher, so he can look in easier to the backyard. It just does not, it does not feel good and it does not feel right for our neighborhood and, um, I'm really sorry that it comes to that, you know? I'm all for the community.
All right, thank you. Your time is up. Uh, I, you, you, I think you've made your point. Thank you very much. Uh, any other public comments other than, uh, the applicant?
Yes, we have Roger Sheehan, and I've, uh, he can now talk.
Go ahead, Roger.
Roger, please unmute.
There we go. There we go. Hey, guys.
You're muted again.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. Technical issues here. Uh, thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. Um, you know, I've, I've, I've known the Shemshoeian family for quite some time. I also built a home on Garnet Street. Um, I'm familiar with several builds. I've done several builds. And I have been astonished at how clean and, and, you know, well organized this project has been from the start. Um, I did see all the notices on, on the property. I've received them in the mail. So I don't know if, if, if there's a, if there shouldn't be any question about knowing that this project was going on. Um, and now looking at the plan in more detail, and believe me, I've read several blueprints like you, and I understand the process. Um, I can't see any way that that deck looks into fifteen oh five's yard. It's so far from that that it doesn't make any sense to me. Now, it's, it's just, uh, you know, an elevation and a deck in the way that it's there. I just don't see it. I think there might be some contention, and I can feel it in the, in the last conversation. Um, furthermore, one of the things that I noticed was that, um, you know, there seems to be a fence at that corner that's not even conforming, um, at that fifteen oh five property. Now, it's not my problem, but I'm just wondering how, you know, one can say one thing versus another in saying that someone's non-conforming. Um, that property fence is, you know, two feet from the street. My point being here in taking that all aside, looking at the plan, I don't see how that, that deck is causing any sort of security issue or privacy issue, because I've seen some really bad, um, deck plans and, and elevation plans, and this isn't one of them. This is a beautiful plan and I'm surprised. But that's my, that's my, um, you know, thoughts on it, our opinion, and I fully support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Katie, anybody else?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised, and I'm gonna check the email now. There is one, uh, email that has been received. And it's from Denise Rovai. And it says the fence has a variance and is documented at fifteen oh five Prospect. And that's the only public comment that we've received on this item, uh, this evening, uh, it, through, via email. And I'll, I'll check this.
Okay, Shewie.
One more time, and we do have another hand up. Oh, no, the hand is down. There was a hand up by Anthony Rovai.
Well, we've heard, we've heard from Anthony Rovai already.
Yeah, yeah, we've heard from him.
We don't want to get into a conversation here.
Got it.
Um, so if there's no, uh, no other public comments, then we can take it back to the applicant, Peter Shemshoeian. I pronounced that right?
Peter, you'll have to unmute.
Yes. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thanks for your consideration here. Um, so, um, you know, I, I feel, I feel for Anthony's situation. I've, I've tried real hard to account for private concern, privacy concerns of all my neighbors. In the original design that Anthony, uh, referred to, I actually shared the designs with him in detail. And frankly, he said the designs are great. And then at that meeting back in twenty twenty, he objected to a rear deck, even though I told him it was my intention in the future to add one. So I was really surprised by that. And so that was, that was at a time when I had the design with the deck, uh, on his side of the property, completely exposed to, to his windows on a second floor, which are actually halfway back down the property. So I realized that, okay, he's not gonna go, go with that. I moved the deck to the other side of the house and recessed it into the house, so it's blocked by a privacy wall. And from his windows on his house, he can't see that deck. It's recessed into the house. On the diagram that, uh, Sean showed, his windows are kind of behind the, I think it's the barbecue area there. Um, so about halfway back down the house. And so, um, at this point, I'm kind of wondering, you know, I don't, he, he's not giving me anything really I can try to, uh, alleviate. I've done that exercise with both the neighbors behind me and the neighbors to my side that have direct views of this deck, and I've, uh, addressed their concerns. I've worked real hard at that. So in Anthony's, um, public comment he puts in, he says he, he, he fears this thing and that his views into his children's room, but his, his, he has two adult sons. They're in their twenties. And so I don't, I don't understand it. Um, I've put a private, I've recessed it into a house to make it private. Um, I, actually, if you look at my landscape plan on my build plans, I put, uh, place five, uh, tall, um, Emerald Green Arbiter Vary, uh, plants as a hedge, because his second floor windows look right into my ADU bedroom, so I need to put some sort of privacy shield there. My opinion is that we live in tight quarters in Capitola. It's everyone's obligation to work towards privacy and address each other's concerns. You need to take steps to ensure your privacy, work with your neighbors, and limit impacts. But frosted glass blinds, hedges, they're, they're also ways to mitigate. You can't expect your neighbors to shoulder a hundred percent of the privacy burden. It's a compromise. And the, um, um, I just, I just see it as a, a, a two-way thing. I, I don't think he can see my deck the way it's proposed. It's recessed into the structure. And I do intend to plant, uh, uh, shrubbery, you know, tall shrubbery, because I, I have those windows overlooking my yard. When he built his house, I never objected to that, because I figured, okay, it's his right to build a house the way he wants. I, I wasn't comfortable with those windows overlooking the yard. Also, I do not get sun in my backyard. The sun is completely blocked by trees and structures. The, 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 the yard sits down in a hole between all the, uh, all the adjacent houses. And so there is no sun back there. The front of the house doesn't get sun after about noon. It's very cold. I just want a small place I can have a glass of wine with my wife. In the back, I've taken every step to minimize the privacy impacts of it. So if you look at that design, I also sent in a separate, uh, email to you, uh, showing views from that back wall and, uh, lines of sight with a detailed diagram of the adjacent houses. I do regret that the other property there on Garnet, that they expressed reservations. That, that houses are rental. Those people don't, they aren't reside, they aren't resident there. And the people who rent, who rent there, we've never had much issue with. So I, I didn't realize they, uh, they would have an objection. Um, and I, I don't see them around to, to take that to them. So I, I have been very proactive with this. Um, and that's about it. I'm, I'm just looking for a, a place to retire. I intend to, uh, live here the rest of my life. Uh, I've owned this house since two thousand and three, at the same time, uh, the Rovais purchased the corner. And I've tried to, uh, tried, tried to go with this. Uh, again, I modified this plan greatly to move the deck away from their side. And, and I don't know how I could do anything more to alleviate concern. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Shemshoeian. Um, let's move on then to, um, commission comments, or commission, uh, yeah, commission comments and discussion. Uh, any commissioners wish to weigh in on this item? I see Commissioner Westman's hand raised.
Uh, yeah, does Commissioner Ruth want to go first since he pulled the item?
Well, I pulled the item because I knew there was some community concern about it. But, uh, you know, I've lived with a rear deck, second floor deck behind my house for several decades. And even though I knew the neighbors well and it had a five-foot parapet wall separating it from my property, it was intrusive. And, uh, fortunately, in the remodel, it's gone now, but it was replaced with a four-by-four window that overlooks my backyard, which I don't know which is worse. But, yeah. I think privacy is important, and I'm not a fan of second story decks. So I would like to hear from the other commissioners before I decide.
Uh, well, I, I pretty much agree. I think that second floor decks become a problem. And, um, I don't think decisions that we make should be based on one particular owner who is there now. But as the planning commission, you know, it's our job to look at what gets constructed in our community and how it's going to work for the long term. And, uh, for me, I think that second story decks do become intrusive. Um, you know, even if it's not a visual issue, it often becomes a noise issue. Um, you know, everyone can hear people out there and what's going on. So for me, I, I am having a hard time, um, being willing to approve a second story deck in this situation. And I'll hear what my other commissioners have to say. See if I can figure out how to lower my hand.
Commissioner Newman? Did you just call on me?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Well, first, I need to say one thing by way of preface, which is that we got communications from neighbors that at least for me as a planning commissioner, uh, raised issues that that at least for me as a planning commissioner, uh, raised issues that I, I would not consider in, uh, looking at something like this, which are, this is not a popularity contest, and it really doesn't help me for, um, neighbors to weigh in and say that the applicant is a good person or the applicant kicks his dog. Um, basically, I just wanna know about the planning issues. And so I did, you know, I, I just encourage members of the public who wanna comment on items to, um, try to address the, the planning issues and not just the, uh, fact that they like someone or don't like someone. As far as the, the deck issue, I would like our ordinance to provide more guidance than it does. It's a pretty vague standard, um, the design criteria that we have. It really doesn't, doesn't help me a lot in solving an issue like this where the applicants and the neighbors have differences of opinion. Just in my experience as a planning commissioner, as far as, uh, decks go, this one is not the most egregious, uh, intrusion on privacy that I've seen. It's, you know, it, the, the distance of the neighbors who are concerned from the deck is, um, you know, fairly significant as these things go, because Capitola is a tight, um, tightly-built area. And I, I mean, I think that the general principle that we're working towards is basically that decks should be treated like rooftop decks, rear decks. Um, and they're in most cases, uh, not allowed is where we're, but that's not what our ordinance really says. So I'm conflicted in terms of, uh, action on this item because I think that the neighbors who are concerned about this particular deck are not as closely affected by it as some of the other neighbors who are not concerned. Um, so I'm on the fence, basically, at this point.
Uh, Commissioner Ruth, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the commission that it's been some time ago, but there was a point in time in Capitola when second-story decks that were not in the front were banned. They weren't allowed at all. And, you know, over the ensuing years, that has kind of changed and worked its way into the, uh, zoning ordinance again. So, uh, you know, I think we were correct when they were banned, and we've kind of moved away from that. And, uh, maybe that's the direction we should go back to.
Well, my comments are, I'm not conflicted with this. I, I don't think, I don't think this is the, uh, the, uh, deck to take a stand on in terms of deciding to change the general plan or the policy about decks. We've approved decks before, uh, rear decks. Um, I, to, to take this to an extreme, you say, well, if you're really worried about privacy and people looking in the backyard, and you just, you wouldn't approve second stories, because second stories have windows, and windows have viewing opportunities. So to me, again, if, if you wanted to take a stand on rear decks, I would say, let's, uh, you know, let's try to find an example or maybe have staff, as per Commissioner Wes- Westman's suggestion, come up with some, with some rules or better guidance. Um, I don't think this is the, uh, the, uh, application to, uh, to suddenly change our attitude towards rear decks. Like I said, I, we've approved them in the past, and, um, and, and I think the privacy concerns have been mitigated. And I just don't see that, uh, that this is, that this is a special case where, where we should start suddenly changing our attitudes over.
Okay, well, I, just to remind the commission also that we have denied second-story decks. And the most recent one I recall was up on McCormick Street because of privacy issues.
And this is Commissioner Westman. For me, I, I don't think my stand on second-story rear decks has ever really changed. I've always considered them to be, um, a concern for the neighborhood, uh, if not with this particular resident, but the long-term effects that they can have, because something, we can't control who is or is not gonna live in those housing units. And they change.
Okay, I'm ready to hear a motion if anybody wants to throw it out there.
Um, I will make a motion to approve the application, uh, without the, uh, rear deck.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Westman and a second by Commissioner Ruth. Uh, any further discussion? Um, I would like clarification. Does staff understand what this motion is? So the application includes some decking, but not the rear deck? What, what are we just, uh, what are we approving?
Right. My motion is to approve the application as it's been submitted, uh, with the conditions that the planning staff has put on the application with, uh, having the rear deck itself removed. I don't have concerns about the front deck.
Okay. That's what the motion, and that was the second. If there's no more discussion.
Oh, there is.
There's more discussion. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mr. Newman.
Yeah, the, the, the nature of this motion is a problem for me. And what I'd like to do is propose an amendment to the motion to be voted on first.
Okay.
And the amendment to the motion is that the, see, how do I wanna do this? That, that the second-story deck be approved.
I guess I don't quite understand.
Well, because if that's voted down, then I will, I would support your motion.
You, you wanna, you wanna make a motion to approve staff recommendation?
So it's a subsequent motion, subsequent motion. It's not an amendment to the.
No, it is an amendment to the motion, because that way, the way the motion's phrased, I can't approve the project without the deck. Because, I mean, I think we should first vote on the deck, and that's the only way I can think of to do it. Then we can approve the project if the deck fails.
So you wanna, so basically, you're proposing we move, we basically, uh, approve staff recommendation?
Right. I'm amending the motion to include the rear deck.
Well, that amendment's not acceptable to me. Um, I'm certainly willing to discuss, um.
Well, Commissioner Westman, could you table your amendment, and we can vote on staff approval first? And then you could come up with a second amendment?
Maybe that's a better way to do it.
Okay, I, I'm.
Because I wanna support, certainly support the, the basic, uh, plan.
Right, I agree with.
And I can't do that on your motion.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to approve staff recommendation as submitted. Do we have a second? I will second it. Chair will second it. So we have a motion by Commissioner Newman and a second by Chair Wilk. Um, no more discussion on this? If not, uh, um, Louis, could we have a roll call vote?
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye. So it's a tie. And as I recall, ties mean it's not approved. So, so the, um, the motion to approve this application was denied. So, um.
So I will make a motion to approve the application with the rear deck being removed from the design.
And, and Commissioner Ruth, do you second?
I will second.
Okay, let's discuss this one, because I've got some questions. Is this, uh, I guess the parliamentary question. So if this gets also denied by split vote, that means we have no motion that has been approved. What happens, Katie, to this application?
So both motions would have failed, and it, it's essentially a denial of the application, which could be appealed, though, to the city council.
That's not gonna happen.
Well, it may or may not happen, but, uh, okay. So, but if it's approved, at least this thing is approved without the rear deck, and they could actually, uh, appeal to the city council, whatever we vote on, correct?
Correct.
So if they want the rear deck and we deny it, they can always appeal to the city council to overrule our decision.
Correct.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Before you go to roll call vote, Chair Wilk, can I ask a clarifying question on the motion?
Yeah.
So there, there's a door leading out to the deck in the plan. It would be great, within this, um, discussion, to understand with the planning commission, if this were passed, like those, like the doors to be modified to windows and at a certain height?
Uh, I'm happy to amend my motion to say that the door going out on the deck needs to be changed to a window, um, that's, um, you know, approved by planning staff. But clearly, it's intended to be a window, not a door.
Do you agree with that, Commissioner Ruth?
I do.
Okay, with that, a motion and amendment, let's call for the roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, we have a unanimous approval of an amended, uh, application. Um, and, um, with that, I think we need to move on to our next item.
That means no sunroof.
Well, no, we have to apply now to put a sunroof on.
Okay, um, our next item is, oh, gosh, six nineteen Sunset Drive, which is item for the agenda five A. Do we, do we have a staff report on five A?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Wilk. Uh, I'll be giving the presentation for this one. Uh, so at six nineteen Sunset Drive, uh, we've got a, a design permit for a second-story addition, uh, along with the entitlement stack. Also includes a, a, two minor modifications for consideration, one for a, a rear setback and one for a parking space depth for, uh, a substandard parking space in the garage. Property is in the R1 zone in the Riverview neighborhood and is a three thousand square foot rectangularly shaped lot. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the curb view, uh, from Sunset Drive, existing, uh, single-car bay. Uh, I've got a hip roof with composition shingles, a four-and-twelve pitch, and existing stucco. Next slide. This slide is an overview of, uh, all the items under consideration tonight. So I'll go from left to right introducing them. Uh, so the rear yard setback is a minor modification, uh, to extend in parallel from the first floor upward uh, to the second story at fourteen feet, two inches, where fifteen feet would be required uh, in the transparent brown there. That is the, the actual footprint of the second-story addition. Looking at the garage, you can see the projection of the kitchen wall. Um, cuts the, the bay short by also ten inches. It's a four-and-a-half percent reduction on twenty-foot clear. And then not a minor modification, but, uh, an item per code that requires planning commission consideration is driveways and parking that, uh, are wider than forty percent of the frontage. Uh, the proposal here is for, uh, a ribbon-style parking with two tread strips perpendicular to the existing driveway. Existing driveway, just of note, is, is, uh, nonconforming, uh, for a parking space uh, in that it's about twelve-and-a-half feet deep and eleven-and-a-half feet wide, and, uh, just not really any, any opportunity to modify it to, uh, to get anything close to a compliant parking space. Next slide, please. Uh, so looking at, uh, the design review aspect, uh, this is a three hundred and sixty-two square foot addition on the second floor, matching existing roof slope and materials with a comp shingle. Uh, this is a horizontal cement board lap siding, uh, to be painted to match over the stucco. I'll point out the window locations, uh, on the front. That's over a stairway. And in the rear, there are elevated daylight windows with a sill height above finished floor at about fifty inches. So some care was given there to, uh, avoid privacy conflict. Next slide. And so same view, uh, of the side. Nothing really, really to introduce here other than, uh, the windows. Again, uh, all, actually, all of these windows are located either in a bathroom, a closet, or at the top of the stairway. So, uh, in the design, the care was given to, uh, to avoid some privacy issues. Next. So with the minor modification analysis, um, we, we actually wanted to get a little further down the line with understanding the, the structural needs. And so, uh, we've laid out here just to, to understand, uh, the kind of structural upgrades that would be needed. And, um, so the, the blue line there represents the existing perimeter foundation. The red line is new, uh, footing foundations and sheer walls that would be added to support. And then the, uh, red squares are new piers and would be, uh, tripled-up structural framing, uh, on the first floor of the house. So, like, you know, in order to continue that line, ideally, I think, in a, in a general sense, when you're laying out uh, a, a new weight on top in the form of a new floor area over the first floor, you wanna lay it out as much as you can over the existing perimeter foundation to limit cost and, uh, also for engineering purposes. So that's why we wanted to show, uh, this slide. Next, please. Uh, getting into the minor modification here, that the applicant actually provided a couple of photos. So, uh, while they weren't meeting the twenty-foot depth, they are actually able to, to functionally use the, the garage. Um, in also analyzing this, we, we looked at what the average length of a car is, and it's about fifteen feet. So, um, you know, other than a modification to that kitchen wall, this is originally built this way and primarily functions as a one-car bay. Uh, this project is required to meet parking standard, which is two parking spaces. So reason for the modification is to acknowledge that this is a compliant parking space. Next. And then, uh, this is the other parking space. So, uh, adapting the front yard to permeable paver of two, two-and-a-half-foot-wide tread strips. This is a compliant dimension of a ten-by-twenty parking space. And the applicant is, uh, upgrading the, the front yard landscaping with some shrubs and flower clusters near the sidewalk and, uh, a drought-tolerant ground cover between the tread strips and a, a mandarin orange tree, uh, closer to the property line. Next. So this is the findings. We did an extensive review of these in the staff report, so I'm not gonna really go into this in, in any great detail. But I did wanna highlight, uh, finding C, just because, uh, talks about necessary due to unique characteristics of the property, structure, and use. And so typically, if we're looking at a variance, things like the structure, the use, wouldn't come into play. Um, although the word necessary does mean that, that the bar should be, uh, pretty high for, for justifying these. Um, we also, in, in addressing this finding, looked at the purpose section for the minor modifications. And there's a, a phrase in there that talks about small deviations to accommodate a project that meets the property owner's needs. So in this case, the need is a third bedroom, a second bathroom, and the necessity is to limit demolishing major portions of the building that would involve upgrading, uh, structurally and using, uh, maybe steel construction methods that are more expensive. Next slide. So with that, we are recommending approval of, uh, to these two minor modifications and the design permit. And that concludes the summary. I'd be happy to take questions.
Any questions of staff from the commission?
I have one, Commissioner Ruth?
Go ahead.
Is the parking in the front yard required, uh, for them to meet the parking standard? If, if that parking space is denied, does that mean they can't do the modifications they've proposed and add the second story?
Yeah, that, that's correct, because the, the parking space in front of the garage is more than a 10 percent, so it, it wouldn't qualify as a minor modification.
Uh, I'm not understanding your answer there.
But the, the simple answer is yes, it would, it would, uh, make the project not feasible.
Okay, so if we deny the parking in the front yard, the project can't proceed, is that correct then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, a follow-up to that question, what is the depth of the front driveway?
12 and 1/2 feet from garage door to sidewalk.
Okay. So, just widening the driveway, you'd have two noncompliant spaces as opposed to one. Alright, thank you, any other questions? Okay, uh, let's move on to public comments then, do we have the applicant or any other public comments? Brian?
Janet Ward would like to, Janet Ward would like to speak.
Okay.
Janet, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Hi, about that, um, my husband David Dixon here is here alongside me and I just wanted to, um, make a comment regarding the drive that, you know, I feel like we're actually, you know, enhancing the neighborhood by providing additional parking. The reality is that we'll probably continue to use the driveway the same way. Right now, uh, my daughter and her, um, my son-in-law and their baby girl live in the house. And right now, the, they drive, they park in the garage and they park on that 12 and 1/2 foot driveway. I think they're going to continue to use that and we're trying to make that ribbon parking as attractive as possible. Um, and in the event that we do need to use it, if there was a space needed, it would get used. But I think for the most part, um, it's going to just provide quality landscaping and hardscaping to the front yard. I just also wanted to, um, say thank you to the Capitol Planning Commission for your time this evening and also to, um, Brian Tholick and Sean Cesant for all the support they've given us.
Uh, I just want to add that, uh, providing the additional parking area does alleviate some issues with that street, which is very narrow, as you know. I grew up on that street, uh, and I'm 73 years old, so, uh, I've been around for a long time and my grandparents owned that and my aunt owned it. And so it'd be nice to make that front look really, really nice and acceptable and provide an additional space. I do.
Thank you very much, uh, any other comments?
I think, um, we're concluded.
Yeah.
I know my designer is out there and, um, I'll let, um, Brian continue.
Well, okay, staff, um, uh, Brian or Katie, are there any other public comments other than the applicant?
I do not see any hands raised in Zoom and I'm now going to the public comment email page and there are no public comments on the public comment email page.
Alright, with that, we'll close public comments and move on to commission comments. Uh, is anybody, uh, commissioners wish to comment on this item?
I'd like to move approval of the application.
I'll second it.
We have approval by council, uh, Councilman, uh, Ruth and second by councilperson, uh, Weston. Uh, are there any discussions on the motion? If there are none, let's call for a roll call vote, uh, Louis, could we have that, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, motion is approved unanimously, uh, application is approved, uh, good luck, uh, with your, with your project. Let's move on then to, uh, the next item, which is 115 Saxon Avenue, item 5B. Um, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, and thank you, Chair Wilk. The applicant here is proposing to convert a flat roof into a second story deck by a single family residence located at 115 Saxon Avenue. The proposed second story deck is located on the side and the front of the property, adjacent to residential uses, which is, um, requiring a, which requires a planning commission approval of a design permit. This application was previously heard by the commission last November and continued pending revisions to address privacy considerations to the adjacent property. The existing two-story residence, as it appears today, surrounded by one and two-story single family homes in the Deepa Hill neighborhood. The existing structure is considered nonconforming because it encroaches into the rear and side setbacks. The applicant is proposing exterior modifications that, uh, would convert an existing flat roof into a, uh, into a new second story deck, you can see it here. Originally, they had proposed a glass wall over the parapet wall there, which is at the edge of the property in, in green, to, and to increase the privacy considerations, they've removed that from this revision and also reduced the size of the deck to an area of approximately 235 square feet. That was down from 342 square feet. Under the zoning code update that went into effect earlier this year, covered and uncovered exterior spaces such as decks do not count towards the floor area calculation. This is a little more of an involved diagram. The property owner of the adjacent residence at 117 Saxon Avenue submitted a public comment citing privacy concerns. Design criteria F requires that the city consider and minimize privacy impacts of adjacent properties with building features such as entrances, doors and decks. In considering the adjacent property, the applicant submitted a revised proposal that would set the deck area 12 feet back from the, from the shared property line. The original proposal had the deck six feet from the proposed, from the shared property line. That is delineated by a inset railing barrier or that serves as a barrier. And the green area is the space that would be not used as a, as a roofed deck essentially, whereas the blue area is the revised proposal of which would operate and function as a deck. The existing parapet wall was constructed as a first story architectural element and is setback four feet from the side property line, which complies with the first story setback. On the side, you can see an example of the railing they were posing to inset, uh, eight feet into the, eight feet behind that, that wall that you see there. To comply with the setback, uh, this would actually more than comply with the second story side setback at 12 feet when the standard is six. Uh, at the top here, you can also notice, we, we went out and took photos from the, from the top of this roof and from this position, it's approximately 12 feet from the property line. And that red line is just underneath the top of the neighbor's outer fence, the exterior fence facing the street. This is the proposed elevations, the areas shaded in blue, uh, indicate the, sort of the area where you would have exposure um, to the deck. The areas around it where you can see it, especially in this bottom right area, are, are portions that would not be functional or accessible, other than, they'll be behind that barrier. So, it would otherwise have a, a limited visual impact on the existing appearance of the residence, except for a new deck doorway and some, some railing post caps. With that, staff recommends approval of the project.
Okay, thank you, Sean, are there questions of staff, uh, on this presentation?
I have a couple of questions of staff.
Commissioner Weston?
Um, so I was trying to remember because, um, I, I was on the planning commission when this remodel got first approved. And it was my recollection that it was a nonconforming structure and, um, they built it the way they, uh, did so that they wouldn't have to provide any onsite covered parking. Um, and when it came to us and there was this sort of flat roof with the wall around it, um, the, the, the planning commission was told, well, you know, they, they did that design feature because they were constrained with what they could build and not have to provide parking. Is that correct and do you remember that? Does staff have any record of that?
I would have to look at the, the threshold of the previous report to know if it, if it would have triggered the, um, covered parking, but it, they were also at the maximum floor area ratio limit, so having a, a deck would have exceeded that under the previous zoning code.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
We, I have a comment, or, uh, I guess it's a question. When we heard this here, I think it was what, last November, uh, we continued this item so the applicant and the neighbors could reach some kind of agreement on privacy. And it appears that agreement hasn't been reached, am I correct in that?
Commissioner Ruth, you, you are correct in that, but, um, you had asked that staff work with the applicant and the neighbor and, um, we did meet with the neighbor and we met with the applicant. In the end, we can't force the two parties to come to an agreement, that's really, it, it's up to the decision of the planning commission. So, we did meet with the neighbor, we, um, understood their concerns clearly and expressed those to the applicant, the applicant modified their plans, um, we actually saw two different, um, two different drafts. The first draft, I think they moved the, um, the, the wall in between, uh, Sean, correct? Was it an additional two feet, I think, so at that point it would have been eight feet from the property line? And we met with them and we said, we really don't think that's addressing the, the planning commission and, or the neighbor's concerns at that point, there, it's still, from that point, you could visually, like, look into their yard. Um, so then they came back with the current proposal as you're seeing it and prior to making a recommendation, um, we, Sean visited the site and as he stated in his presentation, stood on the roof to ensure that, from that location of where they were proposing the divider, that they could no longer see into the yard. Uh, it, it was not practical to get, to try to get both, uh, of the neighbors into the same room together, but we did meet with them separately.
Hey, thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
I have a question slash comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Okay, so, um, when this item was heard, uh, previously, I mistakenly, uh, did not participate actively in the decision to continue it. Uh, I have followed the, um, genesis of this application and I am qualified to participate in it, so I will participate in it.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman, um, I have a question of staff, could you bring up the planned view of this application? Uh, my concern is based on our ruling on 1515 Prospect, I'm wondering how this is going to go, so, uh, the drawings? Yeah, okay, I guess that's good enough, so, let's see. That, so, the revised, if we were to, based on the earlier ruling, if we were to deny the side deck entirely and only approve a deck on the, in the front of the house, there's a door there, right, that basically goes out to the side of the house? So that if they were to access a front deck, they'd nevertheless have to go out that side door, correct?
If, if you're referring to where the, the proposed access to the deck is?
Yes.
At the top of the stairs right here.
And that's the side of the house?
Correct.
So, if we were to approve a front deck, they would nevertheless have to access it by some sidewalk or some mini-deck on the side of the house? Right? Barring putting a new doorway in.
Uh, so, no matter what, they would need to construct a doorway somewhere, because there isn't currently one. But, but there's a staircase in between the master bedroom and the stair, the top of the stairwell, so those are really the only places you'd likely find a, a new doorway opportunity.
So, I'm looking, I'm looking at this, uh, I'm looking at the front, what, what I'll call the front deck. And it looks like maybe there's a window there, at the top of the stairs, if you go straight up the top of the stairs towards the front of the house. Is that, could that be converted into a doorway and, and then have direct access to a front deck and eliminate side deck entirely?
You know, I, I don't think it readily meets the dimensions of a, a door frame. It's, it's a somewhat raised window, it's a, a very wide window.
But I guess what I, what I'm getting at is, if, if, if we're now suddenly not liking rear decks, and I, I would assume that we also don't like side decks for the same reasons, in that case, I would say, well, we could nevertheless approve it based on the side deck being just a walkway, which is maybe only two feet from the house, and that would have a railing all the way until you got to the front deck. Is that something that sounds feasible? I mean, currently, they're going to have this door at the, not the top of the stairs, but at, at the landing, I guess, right? I, I guess I'm confused, okay, there.
It, it, can you see this, uh, pencil, if I, are you saying if there was a line like this, a walkway?
Yeah.
To this front area here?
Well, I don't think we should be, we should be modifying the design if.
I'm just wondering what, I'm just wondering what's feasible, if we were to approve a roof deck, I mean, would that even, is, is that, is that a ridiculous approval, is, I mean, the, the front deck? Is, I'm just wondering if that's a feasible thing to approve a partial deck or not? And if the plans don't allow it, then, then you just deny the whole thing, but if you, if you can do, like Susan did before, approve half a deck, we want to make sure that's at least doable, right? And that's, so that's my question, is it doable? And, uh, it doesn't seem to me as that clear, so I'll just withdraw my question and, and move on to public comment. So, uh, let's do that, are, are there any comments on this item, uh, from the public, Katie, that we can, or Sean, that we want to, uh, entertain?
Yes, there is public comment from, uh, John Schenk and he had sent in a letter earlier that you all have received and read. Um, I did notice that he resent it through the public email as well, but we won't read through that, he's here to speak tonight on, um.
Alright, and we have the three-minute limitation on any comments, so, uh, Mr. Schenk, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Newman and commissioners and staff, I'll try to go quickly here, um, I'm, I'm long, I've got a lot to say, and the letter was long because our concerns are significant. Um, I am John Schenk and my wife and I are the owners of the two homes that are on one lot that are adjacent to this side yard. We did share our deep concerns at the prior hearing and did submit the letter to you earlier with a lot of the details. I, I want to point out, because I was curious, as I've been doing my research on these things, you know, why are we, why is the design? You know, why are we, why is the design permit, you know, why, why the process? And it's because, and I did highlight this last time, council, as they considered allowing these roof decks, expressed great concern, you know, for protecting privacy, you know, when they're proposed. And their, their highest level of concern was for side yards. And here we are. And, you know, it's appropriate that you guys, uh, share my concern or share our concerns for the protection of privacy. I find it informative that the staff report earlier tonight for just the prior item discussed in the design permit, you know, highlights there, I think there were just a few sentences. And one of them was that, pointing out that the second-story windows along the rear and south-side elevations are small and raised, this is a quote, you know, "which limit the privacy impacts to adjacent residential properties." The same point was made when this house was approved back in 2017, I believe, that the side windows were, you know, they worked to elevate, make them smaller, and do these sorts of things to protect privacy. And, and, and the privacy goes both ways, and that was appreciated. And I, I, I think that your, what I perceived is your collective concern over privacy issues is, should remain, and we don't throw it out the window because there's, you know, uh, as, as one of you pointed out, you know, not necessarily perfectly clear language here in the, in the zoning for when and how these things should be permitted. And I'm, I'm talking about second-floor roof decks because of the concerns. And I also, you know, take exception to the, to the staff's recommendation here, obviously, because I think, you know, to think we've solved privacy, and I'm using air quotes here on privacy, because at a single point, somebody standing five and a half feet above an unfinished surface can't see into the yard, that's not, that's not a privacy test in my mind. Privacy is so much more than just visual. And by the way, if we were to, if Sean were to, you know, have walked to his left and looked over the side into the yard, but without the benefit of the screening existing parapet wall, he, you know, it, you would see in, and I imagine if he goes to what I think Chair Wilk was pointing at as being the front portion of this proposed roof deck, you would then look back at the property again, be visible again up on the second floor without a screen. So, I challenge-
All right, you need to finish up quickly.
You bet. The findings A, B, D, E, and F, I, I just, I'm, I'm unable, and I, I hope you all would discuss them if you're gonna move forward with this to document how, how those findings can be made. I thank you. I'm happy to answer questions if that's appropriate at all, um, but I will be listening in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Um, are there any other comments from the public?
I see, um, the applicant is here, Danielle Wise, but she does not have her hand raised, but I'm sure she's available for questions. I'm going to-
Um, okay.
Allow her to talk. She can unmute herself if she'd like to, or, but otherwise.
She's certainly welcome to speak if she wishes to.
No, I'm okay, but thank you. I'll, happy to answer any questions.
All right. If there are no more public comments, we'll bring it to the commission for questions and comments. Um, do any commissioners wish to speak on this item?
A question for you, Commissioner Wilk. When you, when you spoke of the, of the front deck, that's still all, that's not a separate deck from the deck we're discussing. That's all part of one deck, correct?
Correct, correct. Um, so I've got a general question for the, the Commissioners here, and, and that is, uh, are, are we going to do the same thing on this as we did on 1515? In which case, um, if there's a motion, I'd just assume the motion be to approve staff recommendation and then we can amend it from there. Um, but, you know, let's, let's hear. What does everybody think about this? Other questions, comments? General tendency to approve or disapprove? Uh, Commissioner Westman has her hand raised?
Yes. Um, as I mentioned, I was involved in the process when this remodel was originally approved. And the Planning Commission had great concerns about that area being used as a deck. And I believe, um, and I'm going by memory, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Planning Commission put a condition in there that they changed the window they were proposing to be a smaller window so it didn't look like a door, and that this area was not supposed to be used as a deck. And, um, uh, for me, that's what we approved when the remodel was done. And I understand that, um, you know, the zoning ordinance has now changed and we don't count this as square footage, so it won't have any impact on them having to provide parking now. Um, but for me, uh, I think I'm going to stick with what the Planning Commission originally did in 2017 and, and say that this area shouldn't be used as a deck.
Thank you, Commissioner Westman. Any other comments? Commissioner Newman, you're going off mute.
I'm just thinking back to your question about modifying the deck. I think if, if the Commissioners wanted to go that direction, that what we would probably wanna do is just, uh, either continue it for modification or deny it and let the applicant figure out their own, uh, proposed revision, rather than try to, uh, come up with something that, that might work. As far as, but I'm not saying that's the direction I necessarily wanna go on this. I think it's, it's really the same issue as we already had, which is balancing the interests of the two neighbors based on a standard which is vague and, um, uncertain to me. So I have the same problem I had with the other one, which is what criteria do I really use to decide whether or not enough mitigation has been made by moving it back the number of feet that they did? Um, I, I agree with your procedure. I think we should first see if the application has proposed, the approval as proposed by the staff will, um, pass or not, and then, uh, move on.
Wanna go ahead and make that motion, then? We can all discuss it?
Well, I'd like to hear what the other Commissioners have to say.
There's only one more, Commissioner Ruth, which I'd like to speak.
Oh, I'm kind of torn on this one, but I, I just feel that you have to look at these in the long term. And I just don't see any guarantees that that deck at some point in time's not going to be expanded to include the whole roof area. You know, the design lends itself to that, and, uh, I just have reservations about it.
I guess my final comment is, I also had those reservations, but I thought staff did a, did a good job of researching this and eliminating sightlines and then putting conditions in the, in the approval that would, uh, that would prohibit, uh, the further expansion of that deck, at least legally. So, yeah, I'm a little bit torn, but I, I tend to lean towards approval. So with that, uh, then you wanna throw out a motion? No motions?
No motion.
Well, I'll move approval then. A staff recommendation.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on it. Uh, Louis, can we have a roll call?
Hi.
No.
No.
Hi. Uh, split vote, uh, that means that the, uh, application is denied. And if there, I guess that's it. I'm sorry, uh, the applicant and, uh, um, let me just ask, just a general question. I don't know if this is really to the order, but I would like to, like to, uh, get an understanding since we seem to be breaking new ground here on the, on the decks. I'd like to get an opinion of the Commission, Commissioners. The issue with the, the roof, the roof decks, or second-story decks in the backyard and the side yard, again, it has to do with privacy and viewing into other people's yards. And therefore, when it comes to front, frontage decks at the front of the house, since those tend to look mostly on the street, Commissioners in general would be more likely to approve those. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yeah, I would agree.
I just wanna get a, get a sense of where we, where we're heading as a group here. Okay, that's it. We'll, uh, move on to the next item then, uh, which is Item C, 5C, Report on Citywide Alcohol Sales. Go ahead, staff.
Yeah, just a second while we get the slideshow up. Okay, thank you, Chair Wilk, and, uh, this item is before you, um, prompted from the November 4th Planning Commission meeting of last year. The Commission expressed some interest in just exploring and more of an overview of permitting for alcohol sales and, uh, and just the broader process of how we, we handle these. Uh, so we've got a brief report here of some permits that we've issued recently. Uh, on the next slide, please. So in the last three years, we've issued six conditional use permits for, uh, a mix of on- and off-site sales. We've got one in the pipeline that is scheduled tentatively for February 3rd Planning Commission meeting. Um, and we've also got, uh, a table here showing you for onsite sales, we've got 57 total in Capitola and for off-site, 22. And we provided a ratio of, of that to, uh, the rounded-off population. Um, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. But in terms of process, uh, all of these go through a conditional use permit. Um, the only real exception, well, when they're new, they go through a conditional use permit process. When they're a transfer, uh, ABC verifies with, with the city that there is a, uh, a use permit on file and good standing. Uh, so the bullets, I don't need to go through those, but, uh, so it's a case-by-case review. Uh, we've gotta make the findings for use permit and, and the bullets explain what we usually look for. Uh, the ABC is kinda, you know, the state's process, another layer. Uh, they, at certain points in their process defer back to either planning or the police department. Um, and an applicant can't really move forward, whether it's a, a transfer or a new at a certain point unless there's a local sign-off. There's also a posting and noticing process for ABC. You'll see, uh, posters in windows, so they solicit feedback with that as well. Uh, in collaboration, putting the staff report together and exploring, uh, the citywide alcohol sales, um, we worked with the police department and, uh, Captain Sarah Ryan has graciously joined us this evening. She's on, on the phone. Uh, she informed us that, uh, the police review things like service calls and arrest history when they're reviewing these. And, um, they have oftentimes an option to not renew. Uh, as well, I, I'd point out that that's the enforcement mechanism with the conditional use permit is Planning Commissioner or the Community Development Director could always call up a conditional use permit for a re-review if a new impact that was never analyzed is, uh, is suddenly coming from a use like this, or they're not operating under their, their condition. So there is some backend enforcement, but on the front end, uh, these are handled case-by-case. So, um, with that, uh, both Planning and Captain Ryan are available for questions. Thank you.
Uh, are the, I have some questions, uh, but I'll let the, uh, rest of the, uh, Commission weigh in first. Are there any questions of, uh, staff or the police, chief?
Uh, go ahead.
Raise my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Westman.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for, uh, bringing this information to us. Um, I, I thought the report was pretty informative and helpful, at least for me. And, um, I appreciate them taking the time to do it. Um, and that's my comments.
Okay. Any other hands raised?
Um, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Which is, uh, basically to echo, uh, what I just heard from Commissioner Westman, but I, I don't recall ever having, uh, received a report like this in the past. Maybe I was, uh, not paying attention at the time, but, uh, is this the first time we've done this?
Well, I think this actually probably comes based on my question when we approved the English Ales application. So I can give you the, my rationale for why I, why I stress some concern, and that was, you know, the village in particular has a lot of bars and restaurants, and we, we've been approving, you know, obviously on Esplanade, there's, there's a lot of bars and restaurants, but then we kinda let that spill into the, to the Mercantile and the, the pizza joint there. And now serving beer and wine, and then English Ales now brought in Capitola Road is, is now another place. So my question was, well, is there any guidance in the general plan or, or in general where we wanted, had a mix of retail versus, uh, you know, alcohol serving or restaurants? I mean, do, do we, would it be okay to have the entire village convert from retail into bars and restaurants? Is there a keep-out zone? We want to have, you know, so many yards from the nearest residence? You know, I, it seemed to me that there, you mentioned not enough guidance on balconies. I didn't think there was enough guidance on, on approve, on the Commission approving alcohol sales. So I was, I was hoping to get some more clarification on what guidance we did have.
Now, I remember that you, you requested, uh, this information.
I did, and, and I, I don't think that I have any more guidance now, and I, and I guess I'm okay with that. So, you know, I don't think it's, it's really, uh, it's gotten to a crisis level or anything. I just wanted to know if we had more guidance when, say, the place, the, the shop next door to, to English Ales says, "Hey, this is a good idea. I wanna have a beer license too." You know, is there any reason not to keep approving them?
When I lived in Palo Alto quite a few years ago, there was a section of the city that was called Liquor Gulch. So maybe that's what you're thinking this might turn into.
Well, I think we already had that. It's like Esplanade is like, you know, bar away or whatever you wanna call it. And I just want, hey, we wanna have, uh, Capitola Road become Liquor Gulch. And, and I guess I'm okay with that. Hey, I enjoy a drink as well. So if we don't have any guidance, then we'll just handle it in case at a time. That's fine. All right, with that, I guess, go ahead, Katie.
Would, would you like to hear from, uh, Captain Ryan tonight? She's joined us and she's, she's done so much work in our village over the years and has seen how this process, the process that we have in place works and how they have, um, the ability to pull back on permits if there are problem, um, businesses down there. So I think where Sarah's, Captain Sarah Ryan, are you available to speak?
I'm here. Um, I'm, hello, Commissioners, Katie, Brian. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, thank you, Captain.
Okay. I'm, I'm heading up to South Lake Tahoe and I've, I've hit snow and so, um, my, my, my service is just a little spotty, but I, I am here. Um, so I missed a little portion. I just was able to jump back into the call. Um, yeah, a long history of keeping an eye on the village. I was hired, I mean, just not to get into my whole bio, but hired in 2005, 2006 to keep Ely. Appointed me to the village because I had a lot of restaurants, came in with bartender and restaurant business experience um, to fix a lot of the alcohol-related issues that have been going down there, on down there. So, you know, 2006 to now, there's been a lot of really solid partnership with ABC. Uh, we don't arbitrarily, uh, sign off on entertainment permits. We've been known to, um, to, to suspend them when calls for service provide data that their alcohol-related crimes are on the rise and it's an issue. So, um, I mean, currently, right now, being that it's January, all of the Esplanade bars and the restaurants are, are currently, you know, submitting their entertainment permits. Um, and a lot of information gathering goes into that on my end. Um, as I embrace this new role as the captain, really looking at statistical data and reviewing calls for service, any reports, arrests, all of that, all of that information is, um- any reports, arrests, all of that, all of that information is, um, taken into account before we, before we okay anything, 'cause on the back, I mean, as you know, I mean, on the backend, we're gonna end up dealing with it if we sign off on something that is irresponsible. Um, so that, that's the approach that, that we take, and it's been very proactive and been beneficial in terms of keeping the village, the village in particular, because it is a high concentration of bars and restaurants safe, um, from the outcomes that we all know that sometimes alcohol consumption can lead to.
Do you also, uh, take into account neighbor complaints of noise?
Yes, um, that's another component. Um, good question. So noise is, is a huge thing. We, we have a lot of residential and vacation and, um, you know, things going on in the village. And so absolutely, that, those are actually conditions that are placed on entertainment permits with guidelines, and, um, and then they're, they're monitored throughout the, the duration of the entertainment permit. Um, we also have access to ABC grants. We've partnered with them a bunch to do compliance checks. Sometimes we've done stings if we are hearing that there's something that needs to be looked into from more of a covert, um, approach. So, yeah, the, the noise and consumption and also underage drinking, that, that's another thing. We, 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 um, are really active when it comes to that too, and, uh, over-serving.
Have you been asked to, uh, get it, give any input into the upcoming outdoor dining ordinances?
I personally have not. Um, but-
Uh-oh, we're losing you.
I mean, if that's moving forward, I, oh, uh-oh, do you hear, do you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Nope.
No.
All right, well, I think, I think you've answered the question. The answer is no, you haven't had any input on that. Uh, maybe you will be asked that sooner or later.
Oh, bummer.
All right, thank you, Captain.
You know, for, for those of us that were around back in the eighties and nineties when live entertainment was allowed to continue until-
I'd love to, uh, join.
Okay, I, I think, I think we're, we're happy with your response so far. Thank you, Captain, and, uh, we'll put you on mute.
So just, yeah, to continue, when live entertainment was allowed until 1:00 in the morning in the village, uh, between those days and now, it's like night and day, a world of difference.
Okay.
I was involved, part of the council, when we had the lawsuit, when we changed the entertainment, uh, permits from 1:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. And, uh, went to court on that, and the city won. So we were sued by the owner of the Edgewater at the time.
Well, okay. Good, good history. If there's nothing else on this, we can move on to enter the director's report?
Yeah, um, no director's report tonight. I gave you all the updates during staff communication.
Um, uh, okay, then we'll move on to item seven, Commission Communications. Um, Commissioner Westman, I know you wanted to speak again on this topic.
Uh, yes, just simply to reiterate, I would like to see, uh, staff bring back to the planning commission the issue of second-story decks and some history about why we decided not to include them in the floor area ratio.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Well, is, is that clear, Katie? Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Oh, I, I would, um, suggest that we expand that inquiry further into, uh, modifying the, or propose, suggesting that the city council consider some modifications to the ordinance to, um, to add some criteria to make it easier for the planning commission to deal with applications on second-story decks.
That's a, that's a great suggestion.
So is that something that staff would come up with, is a series of proposed modifications to the code? Based on the input you've gotten, you've gotten from us on the last two rulings, you have enough information to come up with some proposals?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is that, uh, you'd like some objective design standards that are tied to second-story decks, uh, and really-
Well, we might wanna, we might wanna look at what other jurisdictions have done with that, and, uh, I'm not sure exactly how to improve the ordinance in that regard, but I think it's worthy of discussion.
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea to have some other, do some research on some other, uh, municipalities and see how they've handled it.
That sounds good. We'll, we'll report back as a, as kind of a work session item for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Any other commission communications? No, I just wanna thank you for electing me chair, and, I guess. And with that, uh, we'll adjourn.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Well, there you go.